Evening, El Segundo. We're calling to order the regularly scheduled city council meeting, and we're going to have Pastor Rob McKenna of The Bridge lead us in the invocation, followed by council member Nicol leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All please rise.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, tonight I am reminded it is always good to start with you, for you tell us that when we seek you first, that it is in that that we find answers. And so tonight, Lord, as our council meets, as our city looks to you and making decisions and all the things that are before them, Lord, I'm thankful that you're in the midst of it. And so, Lord, we pray for our city. Tonight, Lord, we pray for the safety of our city. We pray for the safety of our schools, our children, our administration, Lord God. We pray a covering over the community of El Segundo. Lord, we pray for our firefighters, our police officers, our city officials, Lord God, our park and recs people. Lord God, that you would keep people safe, Lord, free from harm and free from injury. And Lord, tonight, we're so thankful, Lord God, for the men and women that serve this community, this council tonight, that gives their time, that gets their wisdom, their discernment, Lord God. And Lord, I pray that you would give them that wisdom and discernment. Lord God, help them in their decision-making. And Lord, I pray for favor upon the city of El Segundo. Lord God, I pray that you would bring goodness to this community. And Lord, we're so thankful for it. We're thankful for the friends, the camaraderie that we have in this town. And so, Lord, we ask that you would just lead us, guide us, direct us in all that we do. And we pray this in your name. Amen.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have several presentations this evening. First up, we have Meredith Pettit, Director of Recreation and Parks. We'll be introducing a member of the representative of the Los Angeles Kings. I know I see Daryl there.
All right, good evening. Thank you very much. Tonight, we have a special recognition in partnership with our Los Angeles Kings organization. First, I want to introduce the two gentlemen standing right here behind me. We have Chris Crotty, who's Senior Director of Hockey Development, and of course, Daryl Evans, a legendary Kings alumnus and radio broadcaster. And tonight, we are recognizing both the Los Angeles Kings Hockey Club and the Kings Care Foundation for providing their gracious sponsorship, totaling $75,000. This sponsorship will go towards future renovations at the hockey rink, the inline hockey rink at Recreation Park, where we'll be making some much-needed repairs to the surface, the fencing, the dashboards, and a variety of things over there. So with that being said, I just want to thank the Kings organization for being here. I'm going to invite both Chris and Daryl to say a few words.
The Kings would like to thank the city of El Segundo, the El Segundo Inline Hockey Association for being fantastic partners over the past few years. You know, we are the L.A. Kings, but El Segundo's our home, and we look forward to more decades of kids playing hockey in the park. It's pretty exciting for us. Thank you.
And again, on behalf of the Kings, Mayor Boils, we'd like to thank everybody for the way we've been received here in El Segundo. I remember back when we broke ground here, back in 98, 99, and the facility opened up, the ice rink, 20 years ago, we're coming up upon our 20th anniversary. But to have this partnership and now be able to come across the street and be involved in the park and be able to contribute the way we have, giving a little bit back to the community, we are very grateful to be able to do that. We have a great relationship with El Segundo City, and we thank the way that you've embraced us. And this is a place where we're proud to call home. And it's been a showcase around the NHL. I know the visiting teams that come in and practice here in El Segundo, they rave about, you know, the arena and things like that. So thanks for allowing us to be able to do what we've done here in the last 20 years and just giving us this little token here. Moving forward, hopefully, we can contribute to continue to keep pushing the game of hockey in El Segundo. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we come off the picture, Daryl and Chris, I just want to say thank you very much. I know you guys have a big announcement coming up tomorrow regarding USC-KAC and the partnership with the Kings. It's very exciting. As someone who used to drag out the little bumpers at the Richmond parking lot for inline hockey when it started here with my now 31 and 30-year-old boys, I can say thank you very much for everything you're doing to make hockey a great sport in this town. And I finally got my youngest to start playing hockey recently. So he's been playing on that same rink and fell in love with it immediately. So thank you for everything you're doing. Any other comments for the Kings before we get up there?
Okay.
a speaker, maybe, gosh, when was that, Barbara's? Before your time, five years ago when we did, we announced where Big Ideas Take Off and PCT. Daryl, thank you for being one of the members of the panel back then, five or six years ago. And thank you guys are hosting the Champions of Business event coming up here. Is that the end of September 2026? Yeah. So thank you. We look forward to having an event on the ice. Should be interesting to see people try and get to their tables. Hopefully, you can figure that out. Yeah, really cool. Thanks, guys. All right, next up, we have a commendation. Chris Pimentel, take it away.
Whereas Kelsey Cummings, an El Segundo resident, L.A. County Ocean Lifeguard and mentor of youth and the next generation of ocean lifeguards as a junior lifeguard instructor, Kelsey recently finished first as a woman competitor in the Dwight Crum Peer-to-Peer Swim as part of the International Surf Festival. Kelsey finished seventh overall out of more than 1,000 swimmers. And whereas most recently, Kelsey is being appreciated for her Herculean role in helping the L.A. County Ocean Lifeguards Team win the 2019 United States Lifeguard National Championships in August in Virginia Beach. And whereas Kelsey was the US-LA Women's High Points Trophy winner, scoring more points than any other female out of 700 competitors of ocean lifeguards from across the United States. Her efforts were part of a wave of event wins and the points earned by female competitors in the L.A. County team. And whereas the women of L.A. County team showed their considerable mettle by scoring 64%, 65% of the team's total, bringing home a whopping 584 points. By comparison, the L.A. County women scored enough points to have finished fourth overall in the National Lifeguard Championship competition. L.A. County closed the national championship with 892 points, while Monmouth County of New Jersey earned 841 points. Sussex County, also New Jersey, went home with 713 points. Those are probably fake. Perhaps more remarkably, L.A. County had just 24 competitors compared to Monmouth's 103. That's how state taxes at work right there for New Jersey. Whereas Kelsey also provided one of the most dramatic finishes on the final day-to-day of the championships during the Iron Woman event, where it was a head-to-head run battle in the final leg of the event, and Kelsey earned a second-place finish, crossing just a mere seconds behind Palm Beach. Now, therefore, on this third day of September 2019, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of El Segundo, California hereby take great honor in commending Kelsey Cummings on her pivotal role in helping the next generation of youth and ocean lifeguards achieve their goals and setting a great example for her and her peers. Thank you so much, Kelsey. Do you want to say something first?
Yeah, do you want to say a few words, Kelsey?
Sorry.
I guess I could just would like to thank you guys for this accommodation. It means a lot. I've grown up here. I graduated from El Segundo High School. And like, just kind of the aquatics has been a big part of my life. And it's really awesome with what's going on right now with the brand-new pool and the facility. And that's just kind of like a dream come true for me. So I want to thank you guys for that.
Right there, please? It's great to see that continue. Okay, next up, we have Chief Donovan of the Fire Department to talk about our CERT program.
Hey, good evening, Mayor Boils, members of council. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize our CERT program. With me this evening is engineer Jeff Gurney, who is the project lead, and Randall Collins, who's with our Emergency Management Department. This is a real, true team that works with our residents to really build the CERT program. And we remember on many occasions, this council spoke of the support for the CERT program and also gave us some really good direction moving forward. Most importantly tonight are members who are residents of El Segundo who have come down tonight. We tease them with backpacks that Randy Collins will talk about, inserts and hats, but really, it shows their commitment to our community. And up on the screen is our latest GIS map. What we're doing is identifying where all the CERT members live. From this, we'll develop teams that will then work with the first responders during the time of crisis. For those of you that don't know, CERT is a Community Emergency Response Team. This is a national program that was actually founded and started here in Los Angeles County. And what it does is it reaches the community and it teaches normal residents the importance of preparedness. So in the event of a natural disaster or man-made disaster, these residents are taught basic first aid, light search and rescue, team organization, and they then become the true first responders for our community. If you think about a major emergency like an earthquake, the Fire Department will be out doing what we call a windshield survey, identifying what the damage is and coming up with a plan. We now have this team, who are our true first responders, over 50 residents that are identified on this map, that will become our eyes and ears and truly the first responders. So in addition to the map, I have Jeff Gurney, who wants to talk a little bit about how we have streamlined the program to be more advantageous to the residents. And then Randy Collins will talk about the supplies that we have. And then I'll ask the CERT volunteers that are here tonight to stand up and be recognized. So, Ms. Gurney.
Thank you, Chief, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council, city staff. Real brief, we realize the need to train a lot more residents here in El Segundo. What we've realized over the past few years is we've had a tough time pulling these residents in and having them commit to four days. It was a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. We allocated time at night, and it ate up a lot of their schedule. So what we've done now is created a hybrid program. And it's kind of in flux. And I feel where we are now is actually at a really good point. What we've done is we've created what is called a CERT calendar. We've identified six CERT days, and they're kind of dual-function. So what this means is you can go onto Eventbrite, elssegundocert eventbrite.com. When you hit the register button, you'll see a list of days throughout the calendar year. You pick a day that works for you, and what that means is you're committing to an eight-hour day at Fire Station 2 to work with us directly on hands-on activities that coincides with a 12-hour online program that you took prior. So once you hit that register button and you pick the date, you'll be sent a link to your email. That link will send you to an online course that is provided by the University of Utah through FEMA. They're already out with 2.0. It's an excellent program. It did have a few hiccups, I won't lie. We're dealing with normal technology and certain browser issues, but you know, with early adoption comes early problems. But I will say, I'm a huge proponent of this program. We're going to be able to process a lot more residents and businesses and schools alike. So I'm very excited with where we're going with this. And we're already, the next class is October 5th. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council, city staff, number one, I would just like to thank the opportunity to be with you tonight. And I would first and foremost tell you that I am extremely thankful for the support and the leadership that the Fire Department provides through Chief Donovan and through firefighter Gurney. I can tell you that it's a huge relief off my shoulders to know that they're taking care of the program and they just reach out to me for support and purchasing their particular equipment and incorporating them into the planning and that sort of thing. And I think it's very appropriate on our first meeting in September, which is National Preparedness Month, that we have the opportunity to recognize the CERT program. And I know that many of you, through our tabletop exercise and that sort of thing, realize that this is a work in progress based on your direction. So I appreciate that as well. I would tell you that the backpacks the chief referenced a minute ago, they are an upgrade to what we have previously done. And so you're going to notice hats with, it actually says El Segundo CERT instead of just CERT. Same with the T-shirts. And then with the backpacks, we've upgraded them to be more interoperable. So they get their basic equipment within there, but also there are things like the radios. And the radios is interoperable with what we have on order and are currently trying to pull, collect together. And we got most of the gear out at the city maintenance yard now, and then we'll issue out to all the city employees as the Disaster Service Worker Program takes off. So now, our employees will have radios, CERT team has radios. Those radios should be able to talk to one another. So that's going to improve communications after a disaster as well. So we're really excited about that. So the other thing that we're looking forward to is having those assembly points and having a response plan that we'll be bringing forward later, I think this month, actually, for adoption. And that's the plan that you all saw in our tabletop exercise not too long ago. And we're just excited about the continued progress with the program. And thank you for your time.
I know Mayor Protem wants to say something, but Chief, can I, really quickly, I just want to commend all of you. We recognize as council, one of our strategic priorities going back, I think, three years now, was support community safety and preparation. And that one of the leading indicators of preparation, our ability to respond to a disaster, would be how many people are trained in town. And as you pointed out, Randy, this was really just kind of a pivot, if you will, during our tabletop. I love this, showing where our CERT-trained people are. And I want to commend you for working together, different departments, across departments, to make this happen. So thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much. I do want to point out to the east side of town that they're behind, that there's 29 on the west side and only 18 on the east side. So our east side residents, please make sure you sign up. Also, I wanted to ask, and I know we don't have any businesses identified there, is there a way that we could target the Smokey Hollow resident businesses? Because they are, tend to be smaller companies, which wouldn't have, you know, in-house security or HR departments that have this, because there are, you know, maybe one or two people there. So it'd be kind of nice if we could target some of those Smokey Hollows. And the next time we see this, there could be a spattering of Smokey Hollow companies listed. Thank you very much for all your efforts.
You know, most important, we forgot to acknowledge the residents. And if I could, ask for them to stand up, please. They could show their backpacks and hats and shirts. This is the real lift.
Please.
I'm going to tell you, it's really fun, too. The training is really cool.
Oh, no, I'll get it, sir. No problem. Hey, you're a chief.
Doesn't hurt. I'm good. Well, you know, I was looking on Main Street, though, Carol. There's no dot right near you. I mean, at least somebody on my block stepped up. Yeah, I mean, Drew's done. He's got no chance. Chris is pretty bare, too. If he goes around the block, he's got a chance.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Chief, I believe you have an announcement to make as well?
Yes, sir, I have two. I'll go in an order of the date. This Saturday, September 7th, the Fire Department will be hosting its annual breakfast for the community, the Pancake Breakfast. It's from 8:00 to 11:00. We encourage everybody in the community to come down, get a free breakfast, spend some hours and some time with the firefighters. We'll have our typical firefighter challenge for the junior firefighters. We'll have music. We'll have fun. We'll definitely make sure that our community gets the representation in terms of our thank you to them for their service over the years. So we're looking forward to September 7th Pancake Breakfast.
Thank you, Chief. Great event. You guys do. I love it. Thank you. All right. And then you have one more, right?
One more. On the Monday, September 9th, we are officially welcoming anyone in the community to a special event. The Fire Department is beginning the important process of accreditation. And the first step of accreditation is a strategic planning process. On Monday, the 9th, at the Jawsland Center, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00, we're going to have a working lunch. We're encouraging members of the community, the council, staff from the city, we've outreach to our neighboring jurisdictions, to come and spend an hour and a half with a facilitated discussion in terms of what are the expectations from the community, what are their needs that they identify, any gaps that we can work towards improving from the Fire Department. And then following that, external stakeholder group with the community will be three days of internal meetings with the Fire Department staff. And so I have flyers that I'll leave with the city clerk. We've also posted this on all of our social media sites, and we're looking to put this onto the website and hoping to get a lot of participation from our community. So thank you for your time, sir.
That's great. Thank you, Chief. All right, next announcement. Barbara Voss, Deputy City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I just wanted to announce that the date is rapidly approaching for the L.A. Street Festival. And I know the group, the organizing group, including the L.A. Times, is very appreciative of the sponsorship. All city staff, all departments have been involved in helping to coordinate the event permit. We're in good shape for the event. So it's on Friday, September 20th, and Saturday, September 21st, from noon to 9:00 p.m. And the featured sports are going to be three-on-three basketball, esports, music, and food. The city will have a booth at the event, so please stop by. An admission is free. They've got parking set up and, you know, a whole event map worked out. So it should be, they're expecting 5,000 people a day. It's the first event ever, so we'll see what, how many people end up visiting El Segundo on that day. And then I just wanted to add that the fair on Richmond Street is a Kiwanis event, but it's happening on the same day as the L.A. Street Festival. Fortunately, there is a little bit, some time when they're not overlapping. The fair is from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and the L.A. Street Festival is from noon to 9:00. So hopefully, visitors will come and spend the entire day in El Segundo, visiting both events. Thank you.
Barbara, before you go, didn't L.A. Times reach out to the school district? Is that still happening with the?
Yes, for the clinics and workshops. So Friday-
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. So Friday, they've reserved some time for the school districts to participate, schoolchildren. And it's high school level.
Doesn't look like it. Thank you. All right, that concludes our announcements and presentations. We had quite a few tonight. Madam Clerk, roll call. I'm sorry? That's all right.
Here.
President.
Councilmember Pimentel.
Here.
Mayor Potem.
Here.
And Mayor Boils.
Here, thank you. Public Communications, five-minute limit per person, 30-minute limit total. Please come up, state your name, and if you'd like your address. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Ryan Baldino, I live on East Palm here in El Segundo. Two things I want to ask about. One is if there will be an actual public hearing about the Raytheon Development Agreement. I have some questions about that, but I don't know if that's going to be pulled or not. And then the second comment, I just want to express my, I guess, objection to eliminating that second round of public communication. It's not oftenly used, but why not have more public input during the city council meetings? I know meetings are long, I appreciate that, but someone might hear something during a meeting, want to come up afterwards, make a comment at the end of the meeting. I'm a big fan of more public input than less, so those are my two things. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Baldino.
Hello, Jay Heschler, West Oak Avenue. I was up here last city council meeting to talk about the Raytheon Development Agreement, and I would ask that when it comes on consent tonight, that you guys just take some time to think about it and talk about it. I mentioned last council meeting about the park, the seven-and-a-half acre park, and how it really should become a public benefit for the city, created outside of the security perimeter for Raytheon. I would also suggest that Raytheon pays to develop that park. You know, if they just deed over seven-and-a-half acres, that's wonderful, but the cost of developing a park, I'd be afraid that the city would take it on and wouldn't have the funds to actually develop that park. So the development of that park would be a very important part of that. So please, please talk about that tonight, and don't just, you know, approve it on consent, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heschler. All right, I'll make a comment, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. This item will be pulled for discussion. There have been some interesting developments that have transpired since the last meeting, so we will be discussing those tonight. And anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Second round of comments will be placed back on the agenda. That announcement was made after we had distributed and posted the agenda to the website, so they can be added back in tonight if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk? Yes, Dr. Brand?
On the public communications, I was the first one to speak out against removing it from the agenda, because at the same time we did that, a few months before, we shifted our meetings to start at 6:00 PM instead of 7:00. So a lot of people can't get here by 6:05 and make their comments, and if there's no other chance, it's really denying the public an opportunity to ask questions and say what they think. I would be okay with one public communications opportunity, but I'd like to see that scheduled 7:00, 7:30, when people would be here. However, I don't think removing that, that's second and towards the end of the meeting communication really has much impact at all upon the duration of the meeting, so it just seemed like unnecessary to delete that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brand, and I guess one, another negative item about not having is we don't get to hear from Mr. Axelrod, because he never shows up at the first public comment. So.
But if you ever want to know what his speech will be, I could lay it out for you at your request.
All right, and I can't remember, Mr. Mitnick, this is a, this does not require a vote, per se, does it, this item of public communication, before or after?
No, it's council's prerogative, so if you're interested in putting it back on?
Yeah, I think at this point, the consensus is that we put it back on, and, you know, if we feel comfortable in the future not going, is that, anyone object to that?
Nope.
Chris?
No objection.
Scott? Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments related to public communications? All right, so we're going to move on to Item A, Approval of Agenda Order and Waiver of Full Reading of Ordinances and Resolutions.
I'd like to request that Item Number Eight be split into the two separate issues that they are. They're not really related, and I'd like to tackle them one at a time.
Okay, so leave them as Item Eight, but have like an 8A and 8B. Dr. Brand?
Yeah, with separate motions.
Item Number Eight is being pulled this evening.
It's pulled, the whole thing?
Not Eight.
No, not Eight.
Not Eight?
That's Seven.
Sorry, that is Seven.
Clarification, Number Eight is a public hearing, so that's not part of the consent calendar, so when you get to that item, you can bifurcate the vote so desired.
Okay, yeah, I've made note of it. Dr. Brand?
Right, but I thought in this Item A here, which we just added a few months ago, the purpose of that was to add last minute items to the agenda, subtract them, reorganize them, so isn't this the appropriate time to ask for a split of those two issues?
Yes.
Yeah, do we need to vote on that? Okay.
Either way, it's your prerogative, yeah.
Okay, I'm just going to, unless someone objects up here, put them as Item 8A and Item 8B, or 8 and 9. Does it matter? I don't think it matters, right? Is that Don, does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. So the residency will be 8A and 8B will be the delegation. Okay, thank you. Dr. Brand?
And you're going to pull Item Four, yeah?
Yes, I'm pulling Item Four, are there, oh, and I, Item Five is going to be pulled, right? That's not quite ready yet?
Correct. We, there was an inadvertent oversight in terms of how it's bid, so staff will have to, we'll pull that and come back to council at a future meeting.
Okay, so really what we're talking, yeah, go ahead, Carol.
And I'll pull Number Six.
And she's pulling Number Six. Okay, so we are okay with the changes to the order, it sounds like, and we basically are approving Items One, Two, and Three at this time, from the consent calendar.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, thank you. All right, Item Four, waive second reading and adopt ordinance number 1589 to amend Development Agreement Number DA 11-02 to change the phasing of certain street and other improvements for the El Segundo South Campus specific plan, located on the Raytheon Campus property near the southeast corner of Pacific Coast Highway and El Segundo Boulevard. And I believe that we're going to hear from, who's presenting on this? Scott?
Sam Lee, our Planning and Building Safety Director, will give you background, how we got here, but let me just remind the, come on up, Sam. So let me remind the council that the last meeting, you had your first reading on this, so the point, the purpose today is the second reading. There have been some questions asked and discussions in between, so our Community Development Director, Sam Lee, will go over those, but he'll give you background, the timeframe, how we got here, what the public benefits are, et cetera.
And I want to thank Mr. Lee, and Mr. Berkman, and Scott, and Mark for making themselves available Friday for a somewhat impromptu meeting to discuss this at length with Councilman Nicol and I, and I think you met separately with Councilman Pimentel.
Mr. McLean.
And Mr. McLean, thank you, you were there as well. How could I forget that? Sorry.
One other point of order, we also have Scott Pozza from Raytheon in the audience, and he's available to answer questions as need be.
Great, thank you.
So I wanted to remind council a bit of history of this Raytheon project. It all started in 2010, and in 2011, there was some draft, the development agreement was first drafted and distributed. In, end of 2011, the application was deemed complete by the Planning Department. Some deal points were identified in 2012. There were some study sessions that occurred at the council level, and the project was introduced to city council. And then throughout 2013, 14, some deal points were refined. The main components, such as NASH, Continental, improvements of El Segundo and the dedication, some of the bike stations that was going to go into the metro station, those kind of things were all worked out in 2013 and 14. And those major deal points came to the Planning Commission in February of 2015, and the Planning Commission raised some concerns about, you know, there needed to be more public benefit. And so the only monetary element of the Planning Committee, at the time it went to February 2015, was that, that they would, the applicant, Raytheon, would provide a million dollars in traffic impact fee ahead of schedule, meaning prior to any projects coming in, they would make that deposit to the city so that those funds can be utilized by the city to make, in the general fund, to make improvements. And the Planning Commission felt that it wasn't enough. So from February to October, what is that, about eight months? The item, when the item came back to the Planning Commission, the development agreement was, the monetary value was increased to a payment of $3 million over, I believe it was a six-year period. It was about a half a million dollars of payment for about a six-year period. It totaled about $3 million. And then, and if, and then this, the Planning Commission was very motivated to get NASH built sooner than later, so they, I think they added a component where if NASH doesn't get built within 10 years after the adoption of the development agreement, then there would be a $5 million penalty that Raytheon would pay, pay the city. So as it was written, it was approved by the Planning Commission, or recommended to be approved by the Planning Commission. When it, when this item went to the city council in November of 2015, the council increased the amount from $3 million to $4 million. So it was about the same era, same period of time, but the amount, the dollar figure went up from $3 million to $4 million. And then with that, council approved the project in January of 2016. And then, most recently, on August 1st, after working with staff for a number of months, the item was introduced to the Planning Commission where the original development agreement would be amended, and the amended component is to introduce a phasing, additional phasing. So in the original specific plan and the development agreement, there were only two phases. Phase one was the Nass Street Exchange project that's, that's come before you in the past, and then the rest of the 142 acres will be called Phase Two. Now, in the specific plan and in the development agreement, there are a number of places that talked about that this is such a large piece of property that there should, there will be some phasing along the way, but it wasn't very specific. And, but they were, they were, they were now very specific as to what the phasing would look like, and they asked for council, staff's approval, city's approval, and staff believed that this was enough of a change that it would require council's approval as a development agreement amendment. As such, it went to the Planning Commission in August 1st, 2019, and the first reading occurred on August 20th at the last meeting. So at the last meeting, the staff introduced all of the elements of the deal points. And it was, it was the $4 million, as I talked about, over a five-year period, $5 million. There's a 50 cents per square foot, the Raytheon agreed to pay, for each building permit that gets issued, right? So the project is approved for 2 million square feet, and if they build to capacity, that would mean additional $1 million that the city would, would get. They are required to pay their fair share of improvements to nine intersections, and I have the specific intersections, but that totaled, in today's money, it was about 3.3 to $4 million in costs to make those improvements at the intersections. They were also required to build out NASH. And the conversation with Public Works and Planning Staff, we estimated that NASH, to build out NASH, would be about $15 million. To build out Continental would be about $10 million. There is a requirement that there is a 20-year irrevocable offer for three parcels. Two of the parcels will be utilized to connect to Coral Circle, and there is a third parcel next to the, next to the golf course. There are El Segundo Boulevard improvements. There'll be dedications, where they would have to dedicate land to us for us to expand El Segundo Boulevard, and that expansion would allow us to build a Class One bicycle lane, in addition to adding a fourth lane in some parts of El Segundo. There's a, I think it was a $75,000 bicycle facility that they would pay for either metro, or the city would help to build a bicycle station on the Green Line. There's a requirement for a pedestrian easement that would connect from the campus, Raytheon Campus, into the Green Line Station. They've already paid for ability for the city to increase the sewer capacity of $375,000. It's already been paid. And then this whole discussion about the park, and I think there's been some, some additional discussions about that, so I'll skip that for now. And, and then related to the park is a 20-year irrevocable offer for the city to take the park if we chose. And then for several of the improvements, such as NASH and El Segundo Boulevard, there's an enormous cost that far exceeds what the traffic impact fee would be, but for the cost of making those improvements, the developer would get credit for the traffic impact fee. And then this was a list of the intersections that was discussed at the last meeting. And this is a map, just for reference through the rest of the discussion. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, may I have?
So Sam, real quick, so on this list of things, what's the total output financially for Raytheon? And like, obviously, there's different tiers, because if, you know, the second one of the 5 million, if NASH isn't built, you could take that out, but like, upfront, what is the outlay of cash?
Yeah. What is that? I believe it was like 50, 60 million dollars.
50 or 60?
Yeah, I think it was 50 to 60 million dollars.
Does that include the 5 million part of NASH?
Not, not including the 5 million dollars, yeah. And that was a rough estimate, you know, the value of the land, value of this seven-and-a-half acre park and whatnot. I think it was a very, very rough number.
Any other questions for Sam? Mr. Pozza, would you like to make any comments? I think there's been some headway on utilization of a park, if I'm not mistaken. If you could address that, that'd be great.
Yes, hi, mayor and councilmembers. So I appreciate the opportunity to come back up with and talk to you about this again, and I also appreciate the time that was put in since last Friday, for those of us who've been working it. And I understand, believe me, I understand the passion around the park. It's been there since day one. It, you know, it would get, it would get overridden a little bit when Nass Street discussion would come up, but it never went away. So I know it's a passion. As I've mentioned many times, I think that, I think that at some point, and the way this phasing is right now, that point's going to be the very next phase we go through, we have to solve this park. We have to come up with a solution for this park. I would love to stand here today and tell you exactly what that solution is, and I cannot. I'm being very frank, I've been forthright and honest all along through this whole process. If I could, I would, but until I know what the development in Phase Three is going to be- if Nash isn't built, you could take that out, but like upfront, what is the outlay of cash?
I believe it was like 50, 60 million dollars.
50 or 60?
Yeah, I think it was 50 to 60 million dollars.
Does that include the 5 million part of Nash?
Not including the 5 million dollars, yeah. And that was a rough estimate, you know, the value of the land, value of this seven-and-a-half acre park and whatnot. I think it was a very, very rough number.
Any other questions for Sam? Mr. Pozo, would you like to make any comments? I think there's been some headway on utilization of a park, if I'm not mistaken. If you could address that, that'd be great.
Yes, hi, mayor and council members. So I appreciate the opportunity to come back up with and talk to you about this again. And I also appreciate the time that was put in since last Friday for those of us who've been working it. And I understand, believe me, I understand the passion around the park. It's been there since day one. It, you know, it would get, it would get overridden a little bit when Nash Street discussion would come up, but it never went away. So I know it's a passion. As I've mentioned many times, I think that, I think that at some point, and the way this phasing is right now, that point's going to be the very next phase we go through. We have to solve this park, we have to come up with a solution for this park. I would love to stand here today and tell you exactly what that solution is, and I cannot. I'm being very frank, I've been forthright and honest all along through this whole process. If I could, I would. But until I know what the development in phase three is going to be and what the security implications are going to be, it would be, it would be impossible for me to do that. In fact, it would probably put me in a position to where I would not do phase three because it'd be too much risk. So I don't want to do that, I don't think anybody wants to do that. What I did, what I did want to talk to you about is some of the things that came up this weekend. And so I, the park, the current existing park now falls under facilities management in Raytheon. There was some reorganization, you know, that I won't bore you with over the last few years, but it falls under the auspices of my organization. And so as I was talking to staff and the city manager over the weekend, I got to thinking that in the interim, why can't we do more with the park and the city? Figure out a way to do it. We've had some test cases, we've had test cases with the Little League, we've had test cases with people coming on site, fire department, we had test cases with using our parking lots for things like El Segundo High School, parking for their cross-country. So why can't we extend that a little bit more? I talked to my leadership about it this weekend. And said that I think that we could develop a much better relationship with the city if we would try to come up with ways to allow for organized events or activities that could utilize our existing park in the interim until we get to solve the park problem. There would be limitations, obviously. I mean, there, it is a private government contracting facility. So like, you know, I can't have people, it can't be a public park where people come in and walk their dogs and things like that, can't do that. But there are a lot of activities that are organized that we can arrange accommodations for, with security and everybody else. So I had those discussions with my leadership and security this weekend. So I'd like to offer that, I think, when we were just thinking, when I was sitting back thinking, you know, a park, what is a park? Where I live, a park is a place where people have sports activities, they do craft fairs, they do, you know, picnics, company picnics, they do adult league sports, all those kind of things. There's no reason why this park cannot, I don't believe this park could not be used for those activities. We've broken ground on the process because we do have some documentation that people are required to fill out from a liability perspective already. But I was, I wanted to offer to actually make a, put it in the hands of my organization to be the POC or the point of contact for anybody that wants an activity or an event that would like to utilize our park until, in the interim. And not just the park, even some of the parking lots. I think as soon as we start doing, as soon as we're allowed to start doing some phase two work, some of the parking lots might get, start getting a little bit more filled up because we'll be losing a little bit of parking over there. But in the interim, in the meantime, I think that, you know, parking lots can be used for activities as well. I mean, we've had car shows, we've had all kinds of things, right? So I think there's an opportunity to do that, and I think by us working with you and my group, my organization, working with Parks and Rec, we can develop a nice, close relationship, a good, closer working relationship with Parks and Rec. So in the future, when we do get to a park solution, I think it will, it will make it a lot easier and we can work together to come up with something that really benefits both of us. And so that's kind of what the discussion was this week, this weekend about the park. And so I'd like to offer that to you. Again, I think it's, the park is sitting there, I will probably, I will probably want to do some work on the park. And so I think part of this process would be to do a few more improvements to the park and maybe make it even a little bit more usable from a, from a community and a Raytheon perspective.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Can you, I'm sure the council's wondering, can you, without getting into too many details, I'm sure you haven't fleshed any of these out really, but just general sense of utilization, what kind of fields are there? You know, I assume that your employees pretty much use it during the day, but if you could just kind of give us a general sense of the current state and what you envision the future state being somewhat, in general terms.
Yeah, current state right now is the employees do use it, they don't use it every day, but they don't use all of it every day. So we have, I think we have two softball fields. We have a big open field that's used for soccer, I don't know if it's, if it's lined for soccer, but it's big and open. There's tennis courts, there's a canopy area for picnic with tables. There's a horseshoe, there's horseshoe pits, we've had, not students, the employees have horseshoe tournaments out there. We do our, I do my organization, you know, we take the couple hundred people and we go out there for, you know, a summer picnic, or people like to do that during the summer and a lot of the organizations do that. That's during the day, workday. On weekends, nights, we've had a few people, they come out, a few, there's a few softball leagues every so often, and company softball that comes out. And they bring other people that they play, so it's not just playing people in Raytheon to play softball there. And then I don't know that there's any activities, to be honest, on the after-hours on the tennis courts, but there probably is some, some from the employees because I think they're lit. So they're lighted.
So weekends and evenings mostly open, I think? Okay.
So my recommendation is that we, why not utilize the park when it's not being utilized? And it's not, there's not work going on at the campus. And all of those activities are assets that could be used by anybody. I think whenever we just, we just have to go through a process. It really has to be requested and approved just because it's a private property. But we've gone through that before, I think we know how to do that.
So along those lines though, let's say you had a league, like right now, I just met with one of the Rexon Park Commissioners earlier today, field spaces at a premium, soccer, lacrosse. So if you had an adult league that said, "We want to actually take advantage of the Raytheon property for a season," that's something that's feasible?
Yeah, I think what we'd have to watch though is, and the one, the only security, problem security had is the number of concurrent things going on at the same time by outside people and the number of things in one day. So they listed it both ways. So it's, we just have to make sure that our security is not overrun and there's not any concerns from that. So, but I did ask them, I said, "Okay," I asked them something like that. I said, "What if there was an adult league that came in and they had, we've got two fields, and they, each field had a game a night? I don't know, just start there, right? Like, could we do that?" And he said, "That we could do." So, you know, if we wanted to have, you know, three or four games a night, or two or three games a night, it might get problematic. But I think we'll just, I think as we get, I think as we get to work these details out, I think it's going to be less, in my opinion, and I honestly believe this, it's going to be less restrictive than more restrictive as we get to work this out together.
Mayor, about time.
I just have one question. So as far as usage, it's important that the usage that we're encouraging is Parks and Rec's focused usage, not like club sports? Because, you know, they pay to play and I just want to make sure that we're not opening it up for a couple of club soccer teams to go in there and then it's not, that's, you're actually going to make money from that. So it's, this isn't really, this is really for Parks and Recs type activity? So I just really want to make sure that's real clear, that this isn't about you lease it out to a couple club teams and you're like, "Okay, tick, I tick that box." Because that's not what we're, what we're talking about. I think this is really about Parks and Rec's associated play, not...
Except unless, I hear what you're saying totally. Unless that facility is more suitable, given its location, than campus, for example. No, but I'm saying, we're going to have conflicts between AYSO teams, between club teams, between Rexon Park teams, city leagues apparently always get the priority, is what I've learned. So there are always going to be those conflicts, the reality is we just have a shortage of fields.
I understand, but, you know, usually club teams pay quite a bit more. We've seen that with the pool, just, I want to make sure that this is supposed to be an added advantage to our community and I don't want to just target on club teams.
Well, one option you have is that we could make the request, we would only honor requests from Parks and Rec. I mean, that'd be a simple way to do it, if that's what you want to do.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I could elaborate on that point. That's the beauty of this proposed relationship, is that Park and, or Rec and Park would, right, yeah, Rexon Park, would be sort of coordinating the reservation process. So the concerns that the council has on matters such as that, we hear you loud and clear.
And I think right now, you sports council, I think Rexon Park pretty much defers to you sports council to make those field allocation decisions, right? I'll say, I'll work together, okay. Yep, sounds good. Any other questions for Mr. Pozo while he's up here?
So, yeah, I do have a question then. So we charge teams to use the fields currently. Does the revenue from these, use of these, if we're starting to use Raytheon's fields, does that go to the city or does that go to Raytheon?
Mr. Mayor, if I can answer that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. These details, we have to work out. So the Raytheon has submitted a possible shared use agreement. If the city council is interested in pursuing those discussions, just direct your city manager to do that and we'll work all this stuff out.
Because if we're, if the Parks and Recs are assuming the responsibility of coordinating it, I think they need to receive the revenue from it.
Yeah, and in the proposal from Mr. Pozo, which you all have and we've made available to the public, he does indicate that they're willing to talk about that. So we have, we, Mr. Pozo and I have talked and we want to make sure it's not, there's not a financial burden on the city for this.
Yeah, I, this is, this is not intended in any way, shape, or form to be a revenue generating operation for me at all. Where I think we can really work together also is, I don't have, per se, a park manager. I don't have such a thing, I have a person that kind of helps out there. So we, I think we can, working together through the scheduling, working with Rexon Park on scheduling, setting up fields, I mean, you know, we don't have all of that stuff. But, you know, I'm willing to invest, I'm willing to invest in the conditions of the field. I think it needs some help out there. And so I think part of this, this whole process is going to enable me to do that as well, so. And then I think as we go along, there are going to be things that come up with maybe other suggestions or ideas or sharing of either activities or sharing of costs or something. But we'll, we'll work those out, but it's not to my benefit to get a revenue out of this at all. It won't, it's not, that's not what I'm trying to do.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Pozo? One thing I would like to see, if we do direct you to go forward with working out this arrangement for the park, is that there is a metric on field use, number of fields and utilization by people that haven't used it in the past, so we can actually track that, see how we're doing, and report back to our constituents that it truly is a benefit. I believe that it will be, but I'd like to be able to measure that and report back. Carol, did you have a, I feel like, oh.
I did want to ask, I could ask, I know at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Baldino asked if we were going to have public input. And I think, given that both Mr. Baldino and Mr. Heschler, who are on our planning committee, who came up to speak, I'm sure with this new additive access to park, maybe that would be good to bring them back up to.
Yeah, let's, any other questions for Mr. Pozo before we hear from the public? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to then ask council, what is the will of council? Do we want to open up for public comment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, yes.
Please approach the mic.
I didn't realize my mic wasn't on.
Hi, Ryan Baldino again. I want to thank you, Mr. Pozo. He's always been very easy to deal with. I've been dealing with this since 2010, Scott was there with me on the planning commission. And I think what's important, just that we have this conversation out in the open. Because what I'm hearing is we don't have a solution for how we get a seven-and-a-half acre park, even though it's part of a development agreement. So that's still a question that we don't have an answer to. And I don't think we have a roadmap on how to get to that answer. What I heard is, here's a temporary fix to get you some more park access, which is great in the interim. But I think we should have these big questions answered because Raytheon's going to sell this off to some other developer, who's going to come in and say, "Well, these are the rules you guys signed up for." So I, I feel like it's unresolved. And if we can take the time to try to get as many things lined up as we can, the better off we'll be 10, 20, 30 years from now when these things are actually happening. But thank you for at least having a public hearing. Let's talk about what we're doing and what's the public benefit because this is a big project. It's going to bring a lot of traffic to town, and so there's got to be a public benefit for the folks who live here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Baldino.
Jay Heschler? Yeah, Mr. Pozo, that's a, that is a great offer to allow some sort of measured use of that existing park. But it's not a solution, it doesn't solve the bigger problem. It doesn't, it doesn't answer the seven-and-a-half acre park, which is in the development agreement, which is in very vague terms. It says, maybe the city can take it if they want it, maybe they won't, maybe it's going to be private, maybe it's not. It's incredibly vague. So I would ask that you just really think this through. And the seven-and-a-half acre park may not be the keystone to this deal. It's, but it is, it's the one that kind of jumped out to me as being the thing that is maybe the most obvious, largest public benefit. You know, that acreage of land at today's market rate carries quite a price. So I would, while I love the idea that, that, you know, teams can send an email and say, "Hey, can we use this park?" And maybe you can, and maybe you can't, maybe if you can get through security. It's not a true public benefit. It's nice, it's a nice gesture, and it's a good faith suggestion while the deal is worked out. But I, but I would like to suggest that you really hammer out the specific details of that park before you approve the development agreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heschler. Any other public input? Okay, we're closing public input. Council comments?
I have a couple of questions for staff, if we can bring them back up. Either Sam or Greg, one of you. It was a question that I brought up the other day in our meeting, but it had to do with the expiration date on the development agreement. One of the stipulations was we were going to extend the expiration date. And I was trying to understand why. And to the point of us not knowing about this park and when this park's going to happen, as long as the development agreement is in place, that language still exists. And the way I understand it is, really the, the big trigger is that 20% of the property, of the parcels being sold off. And so phase two takes us to like 19% or something, doesn't trigger the 20%. But can you correct me if I'm wrong?
The 20% has, the main component of the 20% is that when more than 20% of the campus is sold to non-Raytheon users, then, then the requirement is that the park that is in the Raytheon campus has to be open for access for everyone that's in the park, in the campus, 142-acre campus. The second caveat is if, and Raytheon holds the options here, is if Raytheon chooses to build a park outside of their security zone, then they would, they must offer up for the city to take the park. And if the city chooses to take it, then they have the option to take it.
So really, all of that gets triggered in phase three, if phase three was to happen?
Yeah.
Now, what was the expiration date we set on this development agreement in this altered version?
It was 10 years with a five-year extension. And with the revision to this development agreement, it would be a 15-year agreement with an additional five-year extension.
So potentially 20 years. And just tell me if 20 years comes and we're sitting here on the 21st year, well, not us, but other people in our roles, in the 21st year, does this language, talking about the park being dedicated, this, that, and the other, does that just go away?
Um, yes.
Yeah. So would it not be in our best interest to not set an expiration date on the development agreement? Or is that unprecedented? Is that not wise on our part? Is it not wise on the property owner's part?
A couple of issues. One, there should be an expiration date of some type because, for both sides. I think at some point, things change. And, you know, whether it's 30, 40 years out, there may be completely different uses that a city developer would want to see there. And to have a development agreement that never expires could burden both sides. In theory, at some point, if both sides agree, they could mutually dissolve the agreement. But, and also from a legal perspective, to have a land use document that essentially goes on forever, at some point legally, that's not going to work and a party could challenge it. It would be better to have an agreed-upon term.
Do the entitlements expire with the development agreement?
Yes, they do. If they haven't been built out, then the right to... If they haven't been built out, then the right to, what the development agreement gives the developers, the right to develop based upon the current land use entitled, the current land use and zoning that's in place. So, in this case, it's the specific plan. So, so long as that development agreement is valid, the city cannot change, if you change the terms of the specific plan, that those changes would not apply to Raytheon. If the development agreement expires, you can then change the specific plan, and those would apply to Raytheon, or whoever the property owners are at that time. So, it locks in those rights during the term of the agreement.
Okay, so, I'm just going to think out loud and you tell me if I'm going down the right path or if I'm veering. If we do not extend this expiration date, if we keep it where it is, 10 plus 5 versus 15 plus 5, in 15 years, the, the development agreement can expire, we could essentially alter the specific plan if we chose to, in the case that phase three isn't happening, the park isn't happening, it's not really producing the public benefit that we believe it to one day be producing. That's how that could go down? And those entitlements could go away? Okay, so, I guess I'm thinking, why then do we extend the development agreement? Because if we don't extend the development agreement, the chances of phase three happening and the park coming to fruition in a shorter period of time is more likely to happen without extending the development agreement expiration date? Am I wrong in my thought process?
I think that, I'm not going to say you're wrong, I think the issue is what will motivate people at that, or motivate the developer and the city at that time, and I think what staff's thinking, which could be wrong, was that if the agreement goes on longer and Raytheon's indicating a desire to go through with phase three, they're going to have to put in a park. And, and there are certain incentives in the agreement for Raytheon to move forward and develop based upon our discussions with Raytheon. If the development agreement goes away, then it would be unclear what those incentives would be. So, I guess it's hard to, it's hard to predict. I think staff's thought was that the law, if the agreement was stretched out a little bit longer, that it would be more likely that phase three would happen.
I don't know, what are your thoughts, after hearing me just babble?
Well, based on what we learned Friday, I think the shorter the period of the contract, the better. I think it encourages the behavior to get the work done, as opposed to delaying it for a long time in the future. And, I mean, the future is certainly less certain than what we know about, you know, tomorrow and the next month, and we've been in the strongest expansion period in history. And when this thing started, we were coming out of recession. We've got a, we don't, to Mr. Baldino's part, point, have a structure for how we do these things. We've already gotten $4 or $5 million in consideration fees, $4 million plus the 50 cents per square foot. This is our largest employer. This, this process started long ago, and really the only material changes are phasing, which seem reasonable. We're accelerating the park use regardless of whether or not you think that's a public benefit. I certainly think it is. And again, this is our biggest employer with multiplier effects beyond just those boundaries of this property we're talking about. And so, then I would ask you, how do we make our revenue that supports 95, what's the number? Greg Carpenter, you said, it's like 98% of our revenue comes from business, not residential, directly or indirectly. So, how do we make our revenue? It's not one-off, one-time fees for development. We make our revenue when our businesses are thriving, they've got headcount, they're growing their headcount, and they're taking on square footage. That is how we make our revenue. And then those employees spend money in our backyards through sales tax. That's our revenue model. It is not one-off fees. And I certainly don't want to be perceived as a city that nickel and dimes its best employers. I mean, I've looked at this issue, we, we had a long, extensive meeting, Scott. I believe Raytheon is going to make good. I know that we'll measure the amount of field utilization that we get out of that park. I believe they will continue with phase three in the future. I believe they need more capacity for the headcount that they have, and this gives them the flexibility to do so, so I don't know why, I wouldn't, I don't know why we're even considering rejecting this, honestly. That's what I think.
Well, I, I would hate for you to put the word reject attached to my statements or my questions, because really my questions were just, all right, just making sure, because that is definitely not the sentiment. The sentiment is the expiration date on the DA. I don't think it's wise for us to extend that. I think it should just be what it is, and we cross this bridge sooner rather than later. I don't think that changes what the park is potentially going to become in the near future with joint use, this, that, and the other. And if this relationship is, you know, as we believe it to be, one that is symbiotic and we're going to work together in the future, then if that date is coming up and the, and the property owner is not at a stage at which they're looking to develop it because of other economic reasons, well, then at that time, the five people that are sitting here can sit down and say, "Hey, do we want to extend this development agreement? I think it's the right thing to do. Been great corporate citizens, working together with us, we got a great joint use deal going on with this park, let's move forward with this." That's, that's my thought. Of everything on here, I think that there is, there is no way based upon the spirit of the original document to chisel out exactly what that seven and a half acres is going to be today in this iteration of the phasing. The original document referenced phasing, we knew this was coming in some way, shape, or form, so this is the way it came. I just don't see why we need to extend that time period any, any further. I'd rather see Continental and phase three, I'd love to see phase three happen tomorrow. I think the sooner we develop that land and the sooner we bring, to your point, 98% of our revenue into this town, sure, it's going to be a traffic jam over there, and that's inevitable, but the sooner we can help that along, I think the better off we are. So, I'm, I, my feeling is that I think we can move forward with what's before us with eliminating that extension of the development agreement expiration date. That's my opinion.
Didn't mean to offend you, thank you for clarifying.
So, I do have a question. So, originally, when this structure, when this plan was developed, there was phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, or there wasn't any phases, and then we broke into phases. As we, as phase one is now done, phase two is in the process, my concern is that the, the park, when the whole comprehensive project was being discussed, the park was a component that was really a, a win for the city. Yet, as we bifurcate and do phase one, and that's separate, now phase two, it's, it's almost like we're losing the, the teeth of the agreement with, as far as the commitment from Raytheon to say, "Yes, we are going to do the park." So, like, if we say, "Okay, yeah, move phase four, phase two with the, we are, we have a gentleman's handshake agreement that we're going to do a park", but it's if they choose or if we choose, and there's no real teeth in the agreement, I feel like every time the, we finish a phase, the, the commitment to the park needs to get stronger, because now there's less for us to negotiate with. Like, it's, it's like, you know, it's kind of like one of those things, like you're moving, you're moving the goalposts away, and we've, I, I'm just, I'm a little concerned with the "they choose" and "we choose", and there's real, it's just really a gentleman's agreement. What happens if all of a sudden they say, "You know, we're coming out of here, we're selling it off", and then the new buyer doesn't even have the commitment to it, because it's just "they choose"? So, I just, my concern is there's nothing there that's really, like, as, there should be a commitment, okay, we approve phase two, you know, there needs to be a stronger commitment on the park for phase three.
I had a question, Mark, based on, thank you, Carol, Councilman Nichols' perspective related to the limiting that extension option, does that mean we'd have to come back for another public hearing if we modify that tonight?
Uh, yes. To provide some information with regard to Mayor Protem's statement, the original agreement did contemplate specifically two phases, but it also specifically contemplated that those phases might be broken into additional phases, because at the time when this was all proposed, it's a very large piece of property with a lot of parcels, and I don't believe that, at that time, that, and Continental Development along with Mar Ventures and Raytheon, I, I don't think that they had that crystal ball yet as to where they were headed with all of these parcels, and so, the agreement specifically provided that it could be broken up into additional phases, and they approached staff with that, and the agreement also provided that the staff had some authority to agree to additional phases at the staff level, and as we looked at it based upon how this would, these phases would be matched up with the different obligations, staff was not comfortable doing that, and thought that was a bigger policy question for the council, which is why we're here.
Okay, Councilman, we haven't heard from Councilman Bran and Pimentel.
I'm somewhat less optimistic. I think that, having gone through the particularities, that, that phase three is likely to come to fruition in a, in a reasonable amount of time, irrespective of what that time is, just because of all the logistics to come along, but that notwithstanding, when our largest employer is looking for flexibility in agreement so they can grow and invest in El Segundo, I think that's something that we are hard-pressed to turn away from. I think we're finally un-sticking a project that turns parking lots into buildings, and turns parking lots into jobs, and parking lots into employees, and parking lots into shoppers. So, I think that it is, you know, given the, the good faith effort they are making within the bounds of what they can do of the strictures of the government contractor to let us have facility usage on those parks, I think that's an important halfway step to phase three. I mean, hopefully, phase three comes in, hopefully, we get a park there, hopefully, all of those things come to, to the Parks and Rec empire, but all of that notwithstanding, finally getting this project unstuck, and finally getting phase two moving, I think, is an enormous benefit to the city that sometimes gets lost in the wash of having the public benefit of a park that we get sporadic use of now, and either way, we'll get more use of, given the proposal from Mr. Pozo. So, I, I would, like I said, I'm somewhat pessimistic on the phase three timeline, but I'm, but I'm strongly in favor of this moving forward.
Thank you, Councilman Pimentel. Dr. Bran?
I don't know, you can, it's ready to roll.
Okay. Yes?
One question wasn't answered. Mr. Heschler had asked, who's going to pay if and when the land is given over? Is it in the development agreement as to, is, can they just give us a seven and a half acre parking lot that we have to develop?
No, as, as part of the, we were very specific that if the park is given to the city, that the Raytheon, Raytheon would, or the developer would pay for the improvements, and the specific plan is very specific as to the amenities that goes into the park, and the developer would pay for those improvements.
Thank you. Oh, Sam Wy, gotcha. Just a fun fact question. The specific plan for corporate campus, the, where the campus fields are and the Lakers' facility is, how many times have we amended that specific plan? Just off the top of your head, it's a...
I, it's, I think it's, it'd be a wild guess, but close to 10.
10 times.
Eight, nine, something like that, yeah.
Right, so, that's a big piece of property that there was a specific plan attached to that through the iterations of the economic turns and employer demands, that property owner came back before the planning commission, before the council, 10 times, to get changes, to, to tweak things, to trade entitlements off of one of the parcels onto another parcel and move things around. So, we're always known for working with the developer to make things work. I just, I wish that we could just shorten that timeframe, but I don't know if I'm going to get it.
I, I had one question that I, I think was simmering, and if, do, are there lingering deed restrictions on that? I know that we thought there were some. Do we, do we know what those are?
Yeah, Mr. Pozo.
Yeah, there, there are deed restrictions on the property from Chevron, and basically, wrote them down so I wouldn't forget them. You can't, we can't do any, build any schools, no residential, no hospitals, no hotels, basically, that's what it is, which, right now, does not conflict with any use whatsoever that's planned for the site, so. It was in the, the, the deed restriction was part of the package that went out in the offering memorandum, so all the, all the purchasers know about that, and so they'll price accordingly, right, for discounts. I just want to make one more comment, if I could, on the 15-year, just from a different perspective. I'm, I'm not hard over either way. The reason that I liked the 15, changing it to 15 years is we're already through almost five years, and not a shovel has been put in the ground. And now, we're going to go get this, I'm hoping that this will move start much faster than phase one did, but you're going to be at 10 years, you know, pretty quick. And I don't know that, my opinion is, I don't know if it's going to compel us to do anything in these, it's going to be based on affordability, market business, all that kind of stuff. So, I just felt the 15, 15 and 5 gave us more opportunity to actually do phase three in a, in the snail pace that we seem to be moving at, right, and depending on how the market goes. So, that was just my opinion.
Now, you mentioned no hospitals, but in phase one, we're putting medical, is that just a different deed restriction? Because it's medical? Because we're putting...
It's a medical center, it's not a hospital. That's my understanding. That would be, that would be their argument with you. I, I don't know. But, yeah. So, anyway, that, that was it.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'm going to move approval of item seven, as was written.
Second.
This is a, I'm sorry.
We do need to call for a vote, don't we?
If I could just read the title for...
Yes, please.
Mayor, "An Order to Approve Adopting a First Amendment to Development Agreement Number 11-02 to amend the phasing and to assign certain improvements and mitigation measures to the appropriate phases", and I would say that you can, this is for adoption this evening, if the council wants to change that five-year to re, take out the five years that was added into the agreement, you can do that, that would make this the first read, and you could either then wait till the next regular council meeting to have a second read, or you could call, you could continue this regular council meeting for a, a minimum of five days and do a second read at another date to speed this along, if that's what you wanted to do.
Thank you. We have a motion that's got a second on the floor, someone called for a vote. All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Thank you. Moves forward, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Pozo, for your time, appreciate it. Thank you, Sam and Greg, and everyone that worked, has been working on this, and thank you to Mr. Baldino and Mr. Heschler for speaking.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, do we have direction to work with Raytheon?
Yes, we would like to direct you, I believe we have consensus on that, to direct you to develop the structure with which we can actually use the park on a regular basis, the cost sharing, the capital needs, all that good stuff. With, with, I think we all want reporting on field use.
Understood.
Now, what it is now, current state, plus what it's going to be in the future.
Okay, so, that'll be reflected in, in the minutes, and we'll come back, we'll agendize that and come back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, let me get my bar and see where we are here. That was four, number five, yeah, okay, five, we pulled that.
Yeah, but that was being pulled by the city.
Yes. What's the story with number five, Mr. Mitnick? Is that being delayed?
That was for, to upgrade the communications equipment in this chamber, and because it went over a certain dollar amount, it has to be treated as a public works project, so we have to cross our Ts and got our Is, and we'll come back at a, a future council meeting date when we're ready.
Thank you. Why don't we do a quick break? Because Mr., Dr. Bran left, we're going to take a quick break, five-minute recess. 7:28. Because Mr. Dr. Bran left. We're going to take a quick break. Five-minute recess. Seven twenty-eight. We heard about Item 5. Item 6 was pulled by Mayor Protem. Authorize city manager to execute a five-year lease agreement with Equinex to provide data center rack space and the associated equipment to house city enterprise and computing equipment. Carol?
Yes, so the reason why I pulled this was because we had talked quite a while ago about the new pools located right next to the Equinox Data Storage Center. And they have something we would like, and we have some, we have the ability to give them an outlet, and that is power and heat. So before we go into an agreement, I would like there to be some dialogue with them about transferring their heat to our pools and somehow, in that, if, because if we do that, if we allow them to give us their heat from, or their electricity from, or the heat from their data center, they'll be able to probably go after some grant money, because it would be more sustainable, it would be less costly for them. So I would like to offer that as a service to them and not have to pay for our storage of our equipment. So I mean, that could be part of the trade, and I think we need to be approaching these companies as partners in trade rather than just paying an lease agreement.
Thank you. And Mr. Mallory's up here to address Mayor Protem.
And I know that's you, you probably, that was before your time, Charles, but before we sign a deal with somebody, there's, there's an opportunity where we can help them, especially being more sustainable, and I'm sure that's something that they're looking to do, because I'm sure, you know, we want everyone to be sustainable. But this would be a great benefit to us, save us on some heat or some electrification for our pool, and then we can help them, and then hopefully we could get some storage fee at either reduced cost or for zero.
That's, thank you, Mayor Protem. That's a great idea. So I definitely will bring that up with respect to further negotiations. Obviously, we have not signed the contract. There are other avenues that we are looking at to potentially offset the cost of this as well. I just want to make sure that if, if we cannot work this deal out with respect to the heat, that we'll do the best that we can, but we'll still move forward if that's okay with you.
I just want to make sure that we're looking at every opportunity to, you know, we're not just compartmentalizing everything, and so we're taking a holistic approach to how we're doing these negotiations. And there's an opportunity there for win-win for everybody, that we could showcase for sustainability. And I just really want to make sure that we're, we're taking a holistic approach to that negotiation.
Sure, sure. We'll full steam forward. It's a great idea. We'll definitely take a look at it.
Thank you. Any other questions for, I didn't even know that existed, Carol.
It's right next to the pool. It's right next to the pool. It's like, literally, when you're looking at the pool and you-
No, no, I mean, being able to harness the heat from the data centers.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It wouldn't take much of an effort to do it.
Yeah, they actually have two facilities, one on 1920 Maple, and then one on 455 Douglas. So, so you're right, it's right next to the pool.
Yeah, I was talking to the Mirtha guys, and they said that it's definitely feasible and would not be too much of an effort.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we'll have Barbara Voss participate in that discussion to make it happen.
Okay, thank you.
That's exciting. Thank you. All right, Carol, do you want to move approval of it, or?
I guess I'll move approval of Item Number Six, uh, Number Eight, as long as, with the understanding that we're going to be, oh, sorry, Six, with the understanding that we're going to be looking at opportunity to join into a partnership with them.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Five-zero. Thank you. Okay, Item 7, which is, relates to a public hearing. And this is for the annual update to the master fee schedule. I'm sorry. Hold on. Yes, Item 7. There is a script for this one, too. Staff advise us the public hearing will be pulled from the agenda and re-noticed. The item will be rescheduled to the regular city council meeting of September 17, 2019. Anything to add on that?
No, again, I'm, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I apologize, but a technicality has arisen, and we have to come back at the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
There's nothing else to read into that, just-
Okay, Item 8. We're going to introduce an ordinance amending El Segundo Municipal Code, and we're going to put in an 8A residency and 8B. So Dr. Bran, tell me if I get this somewhat correct here. But first, it's an ordinance amending the municipal code deleting a residency requirement for the city manager. 8A. 8B would be an ordinance amending the El Segundo Municipal Code, allowing delegation of city managers purchasing and contracting signature authority.
Right, I wanted to split those to two votes.
Okay, two separate votes. Noted, thank you. Okay, this is a time and place here to fix for a public hearing. I've already mentioned what this regards to. City clerk was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner.
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
None has been received.
Public hearing is now open. Mr. Mitnick, who will make the presentation?
I believe the city attorney will. It's a city attorney item.
Yes, and if this is going to be two separate ordinances, just for the record, then Section, they would be identical with the following changes. The title for one would be with respect to the residency requirement, the other would be the delegation city manager's signature authority. And then Section 1, it's in the current document, would be Section 1 in the, in one ordinance, and then you would skip to Section 3, and that would be Number 2, and just number them sequentially after that. And in the other ordinance, we'd take Section 2 with regard to the signature authority, and make that Section 1 in the other ordinance. And again, then sequentially, Number, Section 3 to Number 2, and carry that through. The, my office prepared this. Part of this was at the request of the city manager, and that is with regard to delegating the signature authority to the assistant city manager, deputy city manager, or acting city manager.
Hey, Mark, may I ask one favor? Would you just get a little bit closer to the mic? I don't know if it's just me, but, thank you.
My office did prepare this with regard to, at the city manager's request, with respect to the signature authority. And the, this would provide that the city manager could, with regard to contracts and purchasing or POs and various purchasing documents, that the city manager could delegate, the authority assigned those to the assistant city manager, deputy city manager, or acting city manager. So that is one, the, would be one ordinance. And then the other, as requested by Councilmember Bran. My office, while looking at this, and this is in the same general section as the purchasing, is that we were cleaning up the residency requirement, which has been unlawful for several decades, and we just wanted to delete it out of there, because every once in a while I get asked a question about it. And while we're looking at things, we, you know, try to clean them up. I mean, we don't just go through the code and pull things out, but when we're actually in the section, try to clean them up. So that was the point of it, and I was not asked by anybody to do that. We just did that on our own in the city attorney's office.
It doesn't make any sense to me why you'd couple those two actions. They have nothing to do with each other.
They're just in the same section dealing with the city manager and the code, so we were just cleaning up-
One item has been illegal for decades. Okay, that's an easy one to figure out. The other one's a whole separate deal. And to put those two things together, it makes it seem like they're both illegal things. And why would you marry those? They're separate deals.
I agree with Don. Can we move forward with getting rid of the illegal one?
Yeah, let's get rid of the illegal stuff.
So let's move forward on approved.
Sorry, hold on one second. Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Don said aye for me, too.
Yeah.
Okay, five-zero, thanks. Okay, council discussion.
So can we just do one, which is the residency first, and then have a good discussion, vote on that, and then have a discussion about the other one?
Yeah, that's, I split it that way, yeah.
We should have stopped breaking the law.
Yes, so I move to get rid of 8A, which would be the residency component.
So then you would, there'll be an introduction of both ordinances, would be the practice. So it'd be, first one would be an ordinance amending Title 1, Chapter 5, Article A of the El Segundo Municipal Code, deleting the residence requirement for the city manager, and that was ready for introduction.
Who would like to introduce that?
I'll introduce that.
And then the second ordinance would be an ordinance amending Title 1, Chapter 5, allowing delegation of the city manager's signature authority.
So I'd like to discuss that one. So we don't have assistant city manager, and the deputy assistant position that we did approve was not the assistant city manager, it was director of communications. So I, I really don't think we should be delegating the responsibility of signing contracts other than, I mean, unless there's, we should be, each director should have a threshold of what they should be signing for their own work, but I don't, we don't have assistant city manager, so I don't, I'm not for that decision.
But all this is about right here now is, is anybody going to introduce this ordinance tonight, right? It's got to vote on whether you want to do it or not.
Well, it doesn't have to, but it can be if the council wants to discuss it and make changes to it, or, you know, it's your time to discuss the item.
Yes, so that, that point-
But then somebody's going to have to sponsor it as an ordinance and come back here to another meeting. We can't settle this tonight, right?
Not finally, but you can certainly provide input and direction, and if you want to make changes, discuss it. But you're right, it would need to come back, both of them would need to come back at a second meeting for adoption.
Let's, let's hear from some other council members, too. Dr. Bran, do you want to continue? Do you have a comment on it, or do you want to defer to a colleague?
I want to see if anybody will introduce it.
I'm certainly willing to introduce it, but I'd like to hear from some other council members first.
I would say this, while we do not have a title for an assistant city manager, it does not mean that we may not in the future. And the ability of a city manager to delegate day-to-day or perfunctory duties in the name of efficiency would seem like good business, whether it's an acting city manager, an assistant city manager. I do understand that if we want to make sure we're not confusing titles between assistants and deputies, if we want to, because a deputy has defined roles that may not be that sort of executive officer position, if we want to strike that, for clarity's sake, I get that. But I think that the general spirit of this is reasonably well thought out and probably a good toolkit to give a city manager to efficiently discharge his duties.
Thank you, Councilman Pimentel. Councilman Nichol?
I think it's just a matter of understanding, Carol. I think it's, we haven't had this before, so we're not certain of it. I mean, if this was on the books since the beginning of time or long before we sat here, we wouldn't bat an eye at it. We wouldn't even think about it. We probably wouldn't even know that it happens. You know, and many times, like, right here on this item, you know, the initials for this item to go on the agenda are BV for SM, right? And you see that all the time in many different departments. I mean, stuff that, you know, gets put on our agenda from the planning department, it's, you know, signed, like, sometimes it's like for SL, right? So things like that happen behind, within the walls of this place all the time. So I think it's just a matter of understanding what it is, understanding what's going to be done, and understanding that it's, you know, I do not believe our new city manager, Mr. Mitnick, is going to delegate a, you know, 500-plus thousand-dollar contract, like, oh, yeah, 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 Messiah, just sign that thing, just get that thing done. You know, like, here's my stamp, my signature stamp, just knock it out. But to Chris's point, I think, from a functioning standpoint, it's a tool in the toolkit, and I think it's important, and that's why I support the ordinance.
I mentioned months ago, when we had the reorganization of city manager's office, that we should table that until we got our new city manager. We still haven't worked out the staffing in the city manager's office. It's not complete. Yes, this is a great tool. Yes, this is a great tool to delegate to someone, but it may be premature to take action on this now until we move forward and see how we're gonna staff the city manager's office.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Anything over fifty thousand dollars is still coming before city council. I just want to remind everybody of that. Secondly, we hired a guy with thirty years' experience between county, finance, city management. And I think at some point, we have to entrust and empower our employees to do the right thing. So I'd like to introduce this ordinance.
So with that, both the ordinances will be brought back at the September seventeenth, regular city council meeting for possible adoption.
Could you bring them back separately?
They will be.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Brand. Okay. One second here.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like, since we're still on this topic, to clarify, the staffing of the office with respect to whether we have an assistant city manager, deputy city manager in those roles, that's, I view that as a separate issue and we'll deal with that at some point down the road. So I'd just like to clarify that whether or not we had an assistant city manager, deputy city manager, I still come, I would still ask this to be on the agenda just from a day-to-day workflow management perspective. So thank you for the opportunity tonight. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, let's see. Staff presentations, none of those, so we're on to report. City clerk?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you, city treasurer. I don't see any representatives. Councilmember Pimentel?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Nickel?
I just want to, again, thank staff for coming in on their days off. I'm pretty sure, Sam, your day off was Friday when you were sitting there in the office working. And Ken for answering the phone while playing golf on your day off. Appreciate it. It just goes to show, you know, the public doesn't see the hard work that you guys do all the time. And so it, just taking this moment to give you guys a little nod and say thank you. Appreciate it. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilmember Nickel. I didn't know he was on the golf course.
I didn't find that out till today.
Pretty impressive, wow. He's like, hold on, I thought he was dealing with a kid or something. So I gotta tee off real quick. All right. Mayor Protem, first up.
Yeah, I just want to-
Oh, sorry, 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 Carol. We're, wait, I skipped Don. Councilmember Brand?
Not a problem. I passed.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I just want to, we're coming up to nine eleven. I just want to thank all of our safety and staff for helping keep our city safe. I know, you know, especially in times of, you know, in times of disaster. And I just want to thank everybody, all the city residents for becoming cert authorized. And I encourage everybody to continue to, to do that. And I also want to give a shout out to Ron Swanson again, who will be providing lunch for all the staff on nine eleven.
In-N-Out, right?
Yeah.
Are we eligible for that? Do we get to come?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks. I got a couple of quick things. We had the thirty-second anniversary party for Park Vista. That was super fun. Chris was there. My mom was there because she lives there now after like three years of being on the waiting list. I guess the waiting list is more like four and a half years now. And my mom and I were cutting up the rug. It was pretty fun. They definitely know how to party. We had to work on the DJ a little bit, but we got him in check. We also, just skipping along here, we had a really good meeting with WeWork. We toured WeWork in, at Pacific Coast, at Pacific Coast Towers, Pacific Corporate Towers, thank you. And how many floors are they up to now? They're, they have plans for, they're plans for like up to five, I thought, right? And they're taking, they're converting the top two floors, which we got to tour. And we met with a contingency of the local businesses in there and that was great. So we had a little kind of impromptu workshop. Carol and I were there. Carol had some great insight about involving the businesses more and getting their opinions. We also toured, all of us toured the Boring Company. And that was incredible because it's actually built now. They have a track that's a mile long. So if you don't know, it's near, or SpaceX, which used to be in El Segundo, now in Hawthorne. It's near their facility adjacent. We all went into a Tesla Three, went a hundred and four miles an hour in a tunnel underground and got a glimpse at what the future holds in terms of transportation innovation. That was amazing. We had a meeting with El Segundo Bruco. And we had Rob Croxwell there, the founder, and he was basically bringing, Barbara Voss and her team put this together, but he was bringing together Roger Vincent, which is their real estate writer and editor, long-term, big beer fans. It was a great opportunity to build relationships with that LA Times. Unfortunately, right after that was the Ted Lieu event. And when I only say unfortunately because I had a beer on my breath when I walked into that event, but the timing wasn't perfect for that. But we had Ted Lieu here with the town hall. I think we were all here for that, or most of us. And that is pretty much it, outside of all the work we've been doing on the Raytheon Project. So I just want to thank staff for all the hard work they've been doing. And thank you, Scott, for getting in there and getting to know the community, meeting with all of us and all the constituents. I think it's been a great process up until this point. City attorney, any reports?
Just briefly, that by the next meeting, we should know what bills have made it to the governor's desk or not. And so I'll have a report to council just to receive and file as far as where those stand.
I got a post from Mayor Bill Brand of Redondo, who's been very involved in housing opposition. And there's a laundry list of letter, of all the bills to oppose, most of which coincide with California League of Cities opinion and which ones to support. And he had sent it to Marisucci and Ben Allen. So, yeah, we definitely will be interested in seeing how that unfolds. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a couple items to follow up for clarity. We will bring back the public comments, second section, at the next meeting on September seventeenth. And speaking of that meeting, the agenda for that is coming together and I'm excited to point, remind you that you will have the proposed FY nineteen twenty budget in front of you. You know how much you love doing the budgets. So the public hearing on that, as well as the annual GAN appropriation limit, will be in front of city council. The other items are consent and more perfunctory. So that's it for city manager comments. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, I don't see anyone from the public and we don't have public communication. Jason's, I don't think, I think he's just having fun on a Tuesday night. I don't know what that says, man, but, okay. We are adjourning. Thank you.